Hey, thank you to everybody for coming out to our third town hall. This is our first one in person. The other two have been virtually. So, thank you to everyone who took the time to come out tonight. Uh, this is also being broadcast live on Facebook, but all comments will be taken in person. So, if anyone would like to make a comment when it's time, um, I'll let you know. You could form a line at the microphone and make your comments on Bill 8. Um, I've provided copies of Bill 8 on each side of the stage along with some hand sanitizer. So, feel free to go get a copy of Bill 8. Um, so you can have the exact wording. It's also available online. You can go to Ecodes 360 and, uh, just search Bill 8 2020 or Citizens Advisory Board and it'll come up and you can pull it up on your phone, tablet, computer. And if you'd like a paper copy, please feel free to grab one now. Um, so, uh, we've been talking about Bill 8. Where is that right now in the legislation? Is, it's been introduced. Um, it's in committee. We're having town halls over the summer just to solicit feedback. So, that's the purpose of tonight is just to get feedback from the citizens, uh, see what people's thoughts are, what their concerns are, what they like, what they dislike, uh, so that we can incorporate this in the bill as we move on to the next process. So, a lot of people have been asking what the next step of the process is. The next step of the process is we come back from hiatus next Tuesday as a city council. This bill will not be, uh, up for vote next Tuesday. So, I don't want anyone to think that we're putting it right on the leg- uh, right on the agenda and having it up for vote. It will not be up for vote next Tuesday. We'll be continuing to discuss this as a council, uh, and receive comments. We'll be looking to make amendments to the legislation. We've received a, received a lot of, um, great comments back from the citizens saying things that they would like to see changed, um, including, uh, subpoena powers being a part of the board, including the Chief of Police, no, uh, not sitting on the board. Um, some feedback about, uh, the ride-alongs and the orientation and people having concerns about that. So, these are all things that we're taking into account. These are all, um, suggestions that we're looking to work into the bill. Uh, we're working with our solicitor as well as doing research to see what's going on in other areas, uh, to make for sure we can make this as strong as, uh, as strong of a, a board as possible. So, um, Bill 8 is a bill that would establish a citizens' law enforcement advisory committee. The board would consist of seven members that would represent each policing district in the city. Um, the members would have to have resided in the city of Harrisburg at least three years before their appointment. Uh, as of right now, there would be two non-voting members on the board, which would be the, the Public Safety Chair as well as the Chief of Police. Um, also, in order to be on the board, someone would have to, uh, participate in at least one ride-along a year with the police department, as well as, uh, participate in an orientation or the Citizens Police Academy. So, as you take time to look over the bill, you'll be able to, to see all the details in there. Right now, I'm gonna get ready to open it up for public comment. So, if anyone would like to make a public comment, uh, we ask that you start by forming a line at the microphone, uh, right there in the center. We also ask that everyone wear a mask when they're moving around, especially if they can't be within six feet of each other. Please wear a mask, practice social distancing, stay safe. There is hand sanitizer provided. Uh, also asked that when you pick up a bill that you keep it with you, don't pass it around from person to person because we don't wanna pass germs. So, we will start with public comments here in the center. If anyone would like to make a public comment, please feel free to stand up at the mic and make a comment on Bill 8.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Kamika Campbell, um, Shippensburg area. I just wanted to let the community know as well. Oh, first of all, thank you guys for having us at the park. Um, it's a nice evening. Um, we just wanted to let the community know that we are also, some members of the community, we have been, um, organizing around the, um, this bill and some changes we'd like to see. So, uh, we have been advocating for a community review board and this, uh, paper is going around the audience. So, if you'd like one, just, um, I'm gonna leave them at the front here. Um, what do we mean by a community review of police misconduct? We believe that police officers should be held to the same standards as civilians when they commit crimes, i.e. excessive force, excessive use of force, actions that result in loss of life, actions that target people from specific demographics. We believe that all complaints against police officers should be examined by an independent body that has no political or personal ties to the police department. We believe that information about police misconduct should be made available to members of the oversight committee without barriers that would make it difficult to assess and the legitimacy of the complaint. We believe that a committee may be, may need to review information that is not accessible to the public and will need to remain private. In order to do their job, we affirm that the police have a right to due process, as do all citizens of the United States. We assert that police do not have the right to special protection for misconduct. We believe that police officers who have been found guilty of misconduct should be duly reprimanded and we assert that the cases deemed serious enough to warrant discharge, every effort should be made to prevent that officer from being rehired from any police department in the United States. We believe that residents of Harrisburg deserve more than a complaint department or, um, an advisory coun- council, as this bill is currently written. And we also believe that, um, at this pivotal moment in history, the Harrisburg City Council has the opportunity create, to create a board that protects residents and holds police accountable for their actions. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll leave these, um, up in the front if anybody wants one.
All right, thank you. You can just put them, uh, up right there, it's fine. So, those pieces of paper are provided there. Uh, we also have copies of the bill over here to, uh, your left and to your right, as well as some information that's provided on, um, that's provided on citizens' review boards and the process and what some, uh, other cities and towns in the area or in the state have been doing. If you could just state your name and the area of the city you live.
Uh, excuse me, my name is Ramon Walker. I live in the, uh, Allison Hill area of the city right now. Uh, uh, I'm looking at this bill that's being passed. I don't know, uh, which organization is pushing for this bill. As far as for the people, I would like to ask that question.
All right, um, so this is, uh, a bill that was put forth on the Public Safety Chair. So, I technically put this bill forth. Um, it's not being pushed forward by anyone. It's, it's just a, a piece of legislation that's put out there. It's not being passed at the moment, it's being discussed. So, the purpose of these town halls, like so for tonight and for the ones we've had in the past, the purpose of them is to solicit feedback. So, what we wanna do is hear what people like, don't like, what they want changed, um, whether it's the language, whether it's more powers, whatever it is that you, you want in it, that's the entire purpose. The purpose of it is to be, for it to be pushed by the citizens of Harrisburg and that's why we're having this conversation.
I was listening and I was listening to the, uh, woman that described, uh, the bill before, before I got to speaking. One thing that I didn't hear of it in the organization that's representing and pushing this bill, who is, we're talking about somebody holding these police accountable with this bill. Ain't that what this bill is basically about?
Yes, so the bill would form an advisory board. The board would be the organization. So, it would be a board of seven people that are citizens of Harrisburg.
So, it would be a, uh, advisory board being chosen by who?
The advisory board, um, anyone could ask to, to be a part of the advisory board and then the recommendation will be made. The initial appointments, there will be, uh, four made by the city council and three made by the mayor. And then, once those initial terms expire, the board itself would recommend who they, uh, would like to replace that vacant position.
See, this board is still being controlled by another organization that we are, we, we still are voting upon, I guess.
Yeah, so the elected officials initially would choose the original board. Um, it would make it hard to, to make this a board that was like voted on by the people. That would be an entirely another process and that would take a, a very long time.
So, again, this, this bill that's being proposed of a, a committee for the people is again not a committee by the people.
Excuse me, hello. Uh, Wes Majors, member of Harrisburg City Council. So, as, uh, Chair Green mentioned, currently, we are still accepting amendments. So, if you would like to see additional people have opportunities to appoint people to the board, we are discussing that right now. So, what we're, what, as is currently drafted, they are picked by members of city council and the mayor. They would also have to be members of each of the pre- the policing districts in the city. So, every part of the city would have a representation. But if you want to see there to be more community input on those members that would like to serve on the board, you can offer that as a recommendation to us and we will take that under advisement as we're going to be looking to make amendments to this bill moving forward. So, again, this is, this is a beginning point, not an endpoint. So, we will take that feedback under advisement.
This is definitely a great starting point to, uh, piggyback off of what he's saying. And this is, like he said, just one idea that's on the table for the, uh, people of Harrisburg, I guess, right now. So, my, uh, suggestion right now to why I'm here to speak and I appreciate y'all, uh, giving me a chance to speak is say that we have another organization within these streets that are gonna police the police and watch our streets while we're out here. It could start off with 500 people in our communities and have a station uptown, just like y'all have substations with these police stations. Have a substation uptown of about 150 community members stationed on the, uh, south side, just like, uh, Internal Intelligence and all these programs that were in Clay Street Apartments and things like that. Same type of community programs. But now, these community programs are really being ran by the people. And if we do need police assistance, these community programs can call the police when crime happens. We have an organization now that's gonna protect our people. Yeah, we have an organization now that will be on the streets protecting the people that already are there in this community. So, when we speaking about this, I'm willing to go to other organizations as far as churches, anything else out here in our communities in Harrisburg, because we have to do it and protect ourselves here. Our police is already saying they can't protect us and this is everywhere in America. This ain't, this is just not in Harrisburg. So, if we're talking about taking funds and defunding the police and things like this, we could fund this other program that can definitely be in our communities that will give other jobs to, to our community members in these streets to help police ourselves. And when we do see the police doing things that's un, 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 uh, unconstitutional or anything like that, now we have an organization that can hold these police accountable. If y'all are seeing my vision, I don't know if y'all can see that.
I understand.
But this is just what I, uh, wanted to say. This is definitely a start. This, this bill is definitely a start and I, uh, um, I definitely support what y'all doing right now. You know what I mean? And like I would, I would suggest is that we take it a step further and give some, uh, other organization and fund it to, to the streets so they get, uh, protect themselves with the people out here because we still, like this lady was screaming, we still have to worry about the police coming on time when these crimes happen. So, if there's an organization that is out here every day, like we already are out here every day. We already are in place to sit here and watch what is going on in our communities. And with, like I said, these is creating jobs and everything within our communities. So, I would just say take a, uh, a thought of, think of, uh, you know, look it over, just like you look this bill over. Look it over and, and I mean, we may be, can be the city that start this all around America.
All right, thank you, I appreciate your comment. Um, just to piggyback off of that, um, this, this is one part. Uh, this does not address everything when it comes to like police reform. So, this is not supposed to be like a police reform fix-all. This is one portion. Things shall continue to come out. We should be working as a community, um, as a council to continue to, uh, to reform policing, to make for sure our policing is being progressive, uh, and moving forward just like our nation's moving forward. Thank you, Mr. Maxson.
How you doing? Um, my name's Kevin Maxson, CEO of Voices for the Voiceless. Um, with, with this bill or policy you're trying to implement, I understand the nature of it and why it's essential that you implement this into our community and give the community a voice. But in the same token, like, the hard problem I'm trying to understand is it's really not structured to really reprimand them. Like, there's not gonna be no real mechanism to hold them accountable. There's not gonna be no real mechanism to ensure that the things that are transpiring in our neighborhoods is actually being stopped. Cause not only this, like you need mental health checks for law enforcement, drug screening, uh, they need to learn how to interact with the community. Many of these officers are outsourced from communities. They don't know our culture. So, how can they police our, our environment? They don't know the first thing about us. They're only going off what they see in the media, what they've heard, what they've been told. They have no real perspective of what it is to be black in America. They see a young man with his pants sagging or with some, with some clothes on, they assume he's a drug dealer. I get, I get classified as such every day. So, when you talking about police enforcement and then having a mechanism to, uh, correct some of the injustices associated with police enfor- enforcement, we also gotta look at the systemic nature of law enforcement and where it started, where it originated and how it transcends into the black community. We're already running scared. So, you have four people on the board making the decision for the community as a whole. But I'm sure the people that get elected into this panel are not gonna really be from our community, not gonna be from our culture. Many of them are gonna be silver spoon black people that don't know nothing about being me. Many of them never been to jail. Many of them don't know what it's like to be stereotyped, scrutinized and targeted.
And we don't, we don't know who's gonna be on the board yet. Um, that's something we definitely solicit the community input from. So, it's not supposed to be like a silver spoon. It's not supposed to be a figurehead board. This is supposed to be an actual board of the people. That's why we're here tonight soliciting comments. That's why we've been having, uh, these conversations over the past several months that we've been on hiatus. This is not supposed to be a, a paper board. This is not supposed to be a board that's just like for show. The purpose is to, to try to ensure that we hold our police accountable, that we improve, uh, community policing relations. Every last one of us up here living in the city of Harrisburg, majority of us are people of color. So, we do understand what's going on in our communities. Many of us have seen people arrested. We have family members that have been in the criminal justice system. We've seen how the system has impacted people from a young age all the way up, how it affects their ability to get jobs, keep jobs, own housing. We've seen the entire systematic process of it. So, we're not here to try to play people. We're not here to try to act like we're just putting something on paper. The city of Harrisburg is the furthest along in this process. If you check throughout the state of Pennsylvania, there's been discussions, no one else has even started to, to craft a legislation. So, we're here, we're trying to get this process going and we're trying to make for sure that we get something real on the table. If we just went to pass something, we could've passed this a couple of months ago before we went on hiatus. That's not the purpose. The purpose is to really have a conversation. So, we're, like, we wanna hear your voice. We wanna to get your opinion. We, we understand some of this systematic, uh, processes. We understand the past. We understand where our police officers come from. We understand some of the trainings that they might need to improve it. We understand that we also need to encourage our young men and women in the city to become police officers. We understand that there are a lot of different processes to reforming our police department and making it an actual part of our community ingrained fully. But we have to start somewhere and that's why we're starting here with this conversation.
And, and I appreciate that. But the real issue is, right now, y'all are the face of this policy. If this policy fails, y'all gotta wear that burden. Where are the people who sit above y'all that are supposed to be here, that are supposed to be endorsing this, supporting this, making sure it comes to fruition? I'm tired of black people being used and exploited to do things for the community, even though they're not giving their essential power to carry out the task at hand. I'm tired of the well-wishing. Why did we write to George Floyd was murdered to act? When we could've been proactive when I was fighting for Tyreek Riley? This, these are the things that bother me. Is they doing this as a quick fix? Okay, let's shut them up. Sure they won't riot, sure they won't loot. Like, you have people like me out here every day. I'm not being paid, I'm not receiving any contributions to do the work that I do. I do it because I love my community. I'm in the streets, I'm talking to the youth. I've stopped gang wars. I'm not looking for a badge of honor, but what I'm saying is, before y'all take the stage to push this, have a talk with somebody like me who really knows. Because a lot of the people y'all probably talking to, they don't know.
Right.
They, they really don't, I know they don't know.
Right.
Because I've never seen them in the hood. Never, not once. Unless they're doing some charity for a photo op.
But listen, the purpose is not just to get your feedback, it's to get everybody's feedback. So, having a conversation with means we're writing, me, if we just have the conversation with you or people who are in charge of organizations, we're writing the bill for the people in charge of the organizations, which still isn't the city of Harrisburg and all the representatives. So, we have to have a public conversation. It's not just about your voice, it's not about my voice, it's not about any of our voices. It's about the voice of the citizens of Harrisburg. So, I appreciate your comment. I'd appreciate if you let other people give their comment. If it's time, um, at the end, if you could come back, um, I'd love to talk with you more afterwards if we're looking to, to make some of these amendments. But it's about getting everybody's feedback because it's more than just black people in Harrisburg, more than Spanish people, more than white people, more than, uh, any type of religion. It's getting, ev- everyone interacts with the police. The police essentially become the face of our city. They have everyday interactions with people. And so, we need to get the everyday people to give their opinions to say, this is what I like, this is what I don't like. These are the reforms I'd like to see. Because if not, we're just making bills for one or two select people and that's not the purpose of the city council.
Understood, thank you. They target just us.
And that's the purpose of getting the comments. I appreciate it.
Hi, thank you, um, thank you council very much for holding this meeting. Carrie Fowler, I live in the Midtown area. I have some questions about the membership qualifications. Um, I understand that you're saying that council and the mayor are gonna be the ones that appoint these people to sit on this and I'm not understanding why it has to be council and the mayor that does it. Um, I'm not sure actually how elections run, but if it could be something that community members could actually run for so that they could be seated on this board. I know from prior experience on the school board, when we were letting the school board pick people to sit on the school board, we weren't actually getting good representation at all. So, I'm concerned that maybe council or the mayor's office would be picking their favorites to sit on this board when we are actually going to be looking for people that are in the community, living in the community, understanding the challenges that are going on in the community. And I think the board would be best served if we had people like those sitting on this board. Um, and that you're asking for a lot of qualifications for somebody to sit on this board. None of you, nor myself, as a school board member, has to go through all of these qualifications to sit on a board. So, I'm not understanding why we're making somebody sitting on a citizens' review police report jump through all of those hoops as well.
All right, so, I, I believe Mr. Majors wanted to address some of those points.
So, my first point would be, again, these are, this is the initial bill. This isn't a final form. One of the conversations-
I can't hear you.
Hello, hello, Tess.
That's better.
Okay, you know what? Let me pull this down for a second. Testing, testing, okay. So, one of the things that mem- a few of us have had conversations about as we, as we've been having these conversations is, is this exactly how we want these boards to be made up? And speaking for one council member, I think there are some changes that can be made there. One of the suggestions that, uh, I may wanna see is us, since we have seven policing precincts, all those communities should have, or if they do not have, community organizations that are based in those communities, for them to offer up individuals from their community that could potentially serve on this board. So, we can get feedback from the people that actually live in those specific precincts on who they want to serve on the board. Again, council gets to select and so does the mayor and as it's currently drafted, but everyone has to come from one of those seven precincts and we would want representation from each of them. So, if there's community organizations that can work together to find individuals that they would like to elevate and provide names to, most of the names that we get for people to serve on boards don't come just from all of us up here. They come from community members who provide us with, hey, I, I'm interested in serving on boards. We have tons of boards and commissions that have, that are currently, uh, either have vacancies. So, if there's people that want to serve on boards and commissions, we've done outreach to get people on boards and commissions. Sometimes we get people, oftentimes people, oh, well, no, I don't wanna make that commitment. So, we are willing to work with the community, that's why we're here. We're willing to take all this feedback. So, if you have names, uh, if and when this comes to fruition, provide it with us. But I also like this, I, I personally like hearing from the community directly. You provide us with the names in each of those precincts and then we'll be able to, you know, potentially, a- and we would pick from those, those, uh, community, uh, precincts.
And I hear what you're saying and I appreciate that. I just know that it sounds really good, but it doesn't always work that way. We had more than well-qualified candidates that ran for school board, that put their names in, that they should've definitely been there, but because certain members of board didn't want them, they wanted somebody else because it made sure that their agenda was moving forward. Those were the people that got selected. So, that's why I'm wondering if this can be something instead of city council and the mayor selects these people based on these seven precincts? It's we, the people, select this. We decide who we want in our area to represent us on this police board.
Yeah, and I mean, that's, that's something that we are open to, uh, when it comes to like putting them on a ballot and holding an election. I don't know if that's a process. I'd have to check with Neil to see if that was able to be done.
That was really my question, can we do this?
That's where I thought you were getting at. Um, part of it, we also don't wanna make it a political agenda. I, we don't wanna make it where it's like people are running political campaigns to be on the police advisory commission either. So, you, you, you know, you have to walk that fine line as well.
It would be sort of like in major cities where they run to be the ward captain. I wanna be ward captain of the seventh ward. So, you put your name on the ballot and whoever gets the most votes, that's who's the seventh ward captain. I think that that's what we could do for here and it would absolutely be no bias. It would be the people selecting who is, who gets to sit there. And like I said, um, you know, the qualifications here are, I'm sorry, none of you, we all have our own qualifications, but none of these are required of us to run for office.
Right, they're recommended qualifications right now.
So, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Good evening, city officials. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Darisha Leaks and I'm from the uptown area. Um, my thing is, um, I lost my son, Rayon Braxton, in 2015 to murder in the city of Harrisburg. And as a citizen and as a victim, um, at the time, the city of, um, the police of Harrisburg, they made me feel like another victim. My son ultimately got justice, um, because his murder was captured and convicted. However, um, dealing with the police, the chief of police, um, it was heartbreaking because, um, I never experienced anything like that in my life. And, um, I, 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 I know that I share my pain with so many other people in Harrisburg, but the transparency and the, um, empathy that I did not feel coming from, um, the police force was, um, heartbreaking. And so, I can just imagine, you know, um, if there was more transparency, more interaction with, um, the families' victims, um, you know, they, they made me feel like at one time, you know, that, um, it was just, this is just ordinary, this is just what, what's happening right now. And, um, really downplayed, I, I don't wanna get into specifics on different scenarios that happened throughout the time, but, um, I would love to see more transparency and to be a part of, with, piggybacking on what everyone else was saying, on how this, um, board of committees would be able to come together and electing people that would be for the people to really hear us and make the changes we wanna see. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hello, my name is Caitlin McDonough, I live in Bellevue Park. It remains unclear to me what the committee will actually accomplish. I've heard the word accountability many times, that accountability is not an action, it's not a verb, it's an abstract concept that does not define what will actually happen and what the tangible results of the board will be. Accountability for whom and to what? My question for you, as you consider the amendments and changing this legislation, what will this look like in 10 years? What will have been accomplished by this board? What will have changed? Will policing have changed? How? What will be exactly the same? In, um, council member three, you mentioned that, you know, we could've already passed a bill if we wanted to just do something as kind of a, um, just because, just to say that we did it, could've already done that. It's important not just to act, but to act effectively, um, and because time is precious. I think it's important to consider the constraints that exist on the board, uh, or that, that exist in, um, structuring this committee, uh, particularly with the police contract. structuring this committee, particularly with the police contract. The contract states that the grievance procedure is the exclusive procedure for reviewing disciplinary actions, so right there, that's one of the big things that we would like to see as far as accountability and oversight is off the table because of what's in the contract, that is exclusively prohibited. I mean, and not to mention the, the other legal issues, but. Unobstructed access to information, I think that was Kamika that, that mentioned that. I think it's also worth noting in the contract, a suspension, a police officer who serves a suspension of 10 or more days, which to me is incredibly serious, 10 or more days suspension, that is purged after five years. That discipline of 10 or more days cannot be a factor in any future decisions regarding discipline or promotion after five years, which is, to me, is shocking. Less than 10 years, 10 days, a suspension of less than 10 days is purged after three years. So we're talking about transparency, access to information, there's a serious constraint on that. So instead, we need to be talking about changing policing. My question, what, what gets recognized gets repeated, how are police, how is police performance measured? And what behaviors are these standards driving? Are they looking at the number of tickets or the number of arrests that obviously drives those types of behaviors? Also reducing the need for police. Safe housing, quality education after-school programs, jobs, these are all things. Investment in those social programs will reduce the need for police. It doesn't make sense to me to invest in a broken system and not address the cause. We need new solutions. Jamal mentioned, I think, to take things a step further, we have to think out of the box. I, I cannot imagine how a committee or a board, given the constraints that we are dealing with, I cannot imagine how it is going to be effective. And that is a big problem. Looking at the effectiveness of the board and even just getting it off the ground, I, I know that this, there was a previous attempt, 2016 or 17, something like that, never really got off the ground. I remember hearing in, in one of the meetings that this was due to, no, we couldn't get everybody on the same page, the different stakeholders. What has changed? What has changed? Have the positions of these stakeholders materially changed since then? And if not, then what are we doing? Then how, how are we doing anything different to construct a board that will actually do what we need it to do?
Thank you. I believe that some, the, the climate of where we are as a nation has changed, so that's a big change, which has forced some people's opinions to change. And we've, we've had the mayor say that he'll sign whatever city council has put forward, we have some different members on council right now, so we're in the process of getting this done. So, thank you.
Yes, my name is Jaylee Welborn, prior military service for eight years, and I live at 43 North 19th Street, Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, okay? Now, I'm very disappointed with the police department in the city of Harrisburg for the unresponsiveness when there's drug-addicted people that live in the city that are harassing their, the tax-paying neighbors and prior service military such as myself calling the police because of altercations that go for rounds, days and days without being answered by the police. You want to leave people out here to kill each other, you need to come and make sure that the policies are adjusted so that when the cops are called to these situations, they can arrest somebody. I am a prior military service, and I do not disrespect my neighbors, I do not disrespect other citizens that live in my community. I had wanted to be considered for this community review board, for the citizens, whatever this board is called, I wanted to be considered for that. But due to the fact that no police show up when I call them, and I have to fight for my life every single time I get into an altercation by these drug-addicted people in the city of Harrisburg, and the cops never come, I hope that the advisory board can adjust the policies so when the police do finally show up, they can take somebody to jail that needs to get took to jail. I'm tired of everybody turning the other cheek, I'm tired of looking the other way while everybody else gets to cause havoc and raise hell wherever I am at, and I don't see anyone doing anything about that. I even called Kevin Maxson over the weekend to see if he could address this issue, since he's a community advocate and stop the violence Black Lives Matter advocate. This is his own family members that was involved, and he couldn't even come to mediate or do anything. So therefore, what does it matter to advocate for people in the city of Harrisburg if you can't show up and do something when something needs to be done? Now I had serious injuries, now luckily I know how to fight so that I didn't get killed.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you. But I am sick and tired of living in Harrisburg paying my taxes. It's the same thing as when I lived in Stilton. I know your mom from Stilton, I know your family very well from Stilton.
From Harrisburg, we'll be everywhere.
It's the same policies that goes on in Stilton. You pick who you know, you pick who, who everybody goes to their little First Fridays to have a drink with, to be on this and to be on that. No, pick somebody that's prior service military, pick somebody that's higher up the chain of command than these police that want to pick and choose what calls they answer or not. Because when you call the dispatch, that lets you know if the cops is going to show up or not. They need to have compassion training, empathy training, they need to have all types of other trainings for when they answer the calls. They shouldn't take 15 minutes of speaking to the dispatch to decide if they're going to send the cops out or not. People I know have died in less time than it took for a phone call to the police to be answered. And I call them when I know what's going on in the hood, and I tell them who hit somebody on 13th and Derry with their red SUV. And I call and check where my friend got killed on my old block on 13th and Kettin Tenny after lighting some fireworks, and somebody got mad about the fireworks and told somebody to come around here with a gun and kill my friend. I'm the only one that's here advocating for these black people laws that's lost since 2012. You know what happened here in 2012? I've been to stop the violence person, and nobody respected it. What do I have to keep taking care of, doing showing up for everybody for, and don't nobody show up for me?
Thank you, I appreciate it. And if you are interested on being a member of this board, then we'd be more than happy to have you. Thank you.
Make this short and brief, but you see that woman's anger?
I do.
You see the frustration?
Before you begin, would you-
This is what we're talking about. This is the change that she's talking about, that she's angry at me, this is what we need, we need a real change. We don't need people with, coming down here with all these qualifications, you got your B H C, P H C, and this and that. You know what we need? We don't need you people sitting up there telling, telling, we, we're going to pick a committee. The people that's supposed to represent this committee, are they all here? Where are they at? I want to know where they at? The mayor, where's he at? Huh? The same people, always the same thing, talking the same garbage all the time. The comedian, the committee is sick of it. They're sick of it. You see that brother over there, I don't even know his name. But we should get people that's in the community, that knows the community, that lived this thing, that experienced this thing. This is the type of people we need, as far as forming the committee. People that live it every day. We, we, we live here every day, we live this thing. We breathe it, we sleep it. We need brothers like that brother over there that can form a committee to watch people like y'all. That's what we need, like him. A brother that knows, and he's going to make changes, and he's going to make real changes, not something just keep him quiet or this and that. I had a little incident not too long ago, please come up on me with, are you Tony Mitchell? I'm Tony Mitchell, born and raised here, graduated from, uh, uh, William Penn. Black Lives Matter, I support him. HBC, I'm an HBC guy. Why you come up on me something nonviolent with your hands on your gun like you're going to shoot me? I was paralyzed, I didn't know what to do. But this is what we talking about, and I'm going to tell you this, you can have all this stuff here, all these calls and chases. We going to do this, we going to do that, we got this, please officer this, please officer that. But I tell you what, if you don't change the mindset of those individuals, it ain't going to be, it ain't going to go, it ain't going to be nothing. The mind of these, of those people, the mind of these officers has to change. We, the Black Lives Matter, we don't need, not to, you might, I make this comment, you might, oh, he's, he's racial, he's, no. But here's what we don't need. We don't need white people walking up in the, uh, Black Lives Matter, talking about, what do you want? What do you need? Go read, go study the history. These police officers need to study the history of black folk, brown folk, of all the folk that's in this community, they need to study their history. So then, when they, when they around here, they don't need to ask you what you need, what you want, they don't know. You see? And one, one guy that I like, he's a, he's your commissioner. He's the best friend of my brother. And he's the best friend of mine too, Carter. No, he's commissioner. But I tell you what, regardless of what you like him, to regardless of what you agree or disagree with him, he's a man can take that badge off, take that gun off, and walk all over the community. He can walk anywhere. Regardless of whether you like him, disagree with him, he can take that badge and gun off and walk all over, in, in any community. Black, white, green, he can walk anywhere he want to. I've seen him and I walk with him. This is the reform that we need, a real reform, a real reform of the mindset of these people. That's what we need. And thank you, everybody, for being here. And then, you know, another thing, where's all you pastors, preachers, all these church? Where you at? Come down and represent the people in the community too. Get down here. This is a forum to, to speak, you speak what you have to speak, to come out. Where you at? Where you at? These are your people. These are your people. Come down here. Come down here and represent. Thank you. God bless everybody.
Hello, everyone, my name is Amanda Arbor, I live near 15th and Derry Streets in Harrisburg. Thank you for creating another opportunity for community feedback. I think it's clear from the community that we want a civilian review board that has teeth, that has power and ability to hold the police accountable. But we've also been told that things in the FOP contract would make this virtually impossible, so things like not allowing the civilian review board to actually make decisions about disciplining officers. So I have three questions for you all in relation to this. First, is there a date by which you can commit to posting the FOP contract and other police documents in an easily accessible place on the website, which many people, including myself, have been asking for at several town halls? Second, are you willing to advocate with the FOP to reopen the contract, to renegotiate some of these key provisions? At the last town hall, Neil Grover said that this contract expires either December 21st, 2025, or 2026, and we can't wait that long to address these critical issues in our community. And third, are each of you who are elected officials willing to take the no-cop money pledge online and screenshot it to your social media, which commits you to not taking any campaign contributions from law enforcement? Thank you.
All right, so I'll, I'll try to answer all those questions, I believe I remember them all. First, when can we commit to putting the police contract online? I will commit to trying to get it on there by Labor Day in an easily accessible fashion. The second question, I believe, was about opening, opening the FOP contract. I would have to, to refer to Neil about that, I don't believe we can unilaterally open up the FOP contract, I believe they would have to be a part of that, and I can't commit to that because I don't think that I can unilaterally do it, or I don't think council at all can unilaterally do it. And the third question was the no-cop pledge. I have not received funds from the police department in my bid for city council, I do not plan on receiving funds from the police department in my bid for city council, so I can say yes to that. So those are the three questions I believe you asked.
Are you good? I'm good. Hi, hello, my name's Jane Buckway. You know, Allison Hill.
All right.
So, yeah, all right, that's all right. So I have a question, because as I was looking at the bill, again, and again, is that, is that Councilor Grover over there? Is that you?
That is.
It, it is you, well, great. So what I currently want to know, as I'm going through mounds of research and paperwork, currently, what are the steps that, you know, like step-by-step process of an officer, what does, what does the officer go through when being reviewed for use of excessive force? Because I can't find it, I see a policy that says, you know, we, we won't beat you up, but I want to know what the step-by-step process is, because I do believe that if we're going to have an effective review board, we have to know, we have to see how that fits in. And, and as you can tell from the community, and you know you're going to hear it, you know, that's, that's what you get for taking office, right? We all do. People are angry, people are frustrated, but I think we could clear up quite a bit, not everything. But for me, I just want to know, I'm an officer and I have a complaint filed for excessive force, what happens now? What's the step-by-step process? Now I'll give you a chance to, thank you.
Thank you. I do not know the step-by-step process, I don't have to talk to the police department to get the exact step-by-step process. Neil, do you have any, any idea what the process, the due process that officers are afforded if a complaint's made against them for excessive force?
There are different levels of force under what they call the continuum of force, which is set not by the Harrisburg Police, but by others in law enforcement, which the Harrisburg Police implemented. And I think it's got four or five phases that they consider force. Not surprisingly, because of that, what discipline happens and how it happens depends on the seriousness of the accusation. So if the accusation is, an officer smashed my head into a car roof, they would consider that a serious accusation. If the officer was, I thought that they put cuffs on me too tight, it may not be a serious accusation. Murder is actually the most serious accusation. So, and what happens when there is any shooting, the process is that it is removed from the Harrisburg Police. It goes over to the district attorney's office. It often then involves the Pennsylvania State Police or the Attorney General in the investigation. There's also simultaneously an internal affairs investigation inside the police, at which point, under jurisprudence, the law created long before we were here, an officer surrenders their Fourth Amendment right against self-incrimination in that, because they have to answer that question, or they can be terminated for not answering questions. Because of that, under the law that exists, that information, that interview, doesn't go back over to the district attorney. That's what the Supreme Court said that, they're the ones who laid out the groundwork for it. So they have to have two separate, independent investigations. The internal affairs one is, in a sense, an employer investigation about their employee. The district attorney is to see whether the force was justified or not, and they make that determination. They are entitled to counsel and representation in both settings, in those places, and I don't know that any officer has never availed themselves of that counsel and representation. The, the process does take a long time. In addition, there's a shooting review board, so even if they're cleared of a misconduct or wrongdoing, there's a separate board to review the shooting, to see if the shooting involved a violation of the general orders or policies of the police department. It does take a long time. There's been a handful of these shootings that have occurred since I've been with the city, which is like six years now.
A handful.
Of shootings.
A handful.
A handful.
You better take, put two hands up. Three. My, my thing to you, my thing to you, sir. Listen, my thing to you, sir, is Harrisburg has had a history of police shootings and murders of black people. What we want to see is a truth and reconciliation like the Jews had for, for the Holocaust, because black people have been facing this in Harrisburg for uncountable years. Now, I don't know about you, you're saying you've been here for six years, I don't know nothing about that, but what I do know is, I can name off my hand right now, 10 people in the last, uh, five years that have been killed at the hands of police, shooting in the, in the head, shooting in the back, out at Dolphin County Prison, where Phil Churchill had the nerve to say that that killing was justified, and that he didn't have any problem with that. We're tired of that, and this right here is a farce. What you're doing is you're putting up these kinds of meetings to kind of placate and, and pacify people, but what we really want is for real, for you folks to have the police come and, and deal with us directly. Everybody up there is sitting pretty comfortably, but our community is suffering and has continued to suffer. Now I appreciate the fact that you guys are, are, are kind of, put this thing together and say, yeah, this is something that needs to happen, but what's been happening, this is not just in a sense George Floyd. I'm 65, I lived in Harrisburg all my life, and I've seen black people murdered at the hands of these- I'm sixty-five, I lived in Harrisburg all my life, and I've seen black people murdered at the hands of these city police officers. All my life. So this is just ridiculous for you guys to sit here and act as if, oh, we're really seriously trying to do something about this. If you're serious about trying to do something about this, then even with Fran Charlton coming and saying that black people, that the young man that was murdered out in the county, it was justified. How do you justify killing somebody in police custody? We're supposed to be, when you're arrested and you're taken into prison, you're supposed to be under that, not just custody, but protection. And, and we don't see any of that. So when you start to talk these kind of passive, we should understand, we should do this. No, let's look at the history of this situation and really start to deal with that.
I appreciate your comment. I'll just make one or two notes here. If we could let people finish answering the question before we move on. That way just, we can make sure we have all the information, that's one. Two, I appreciate your comments. Everything's been taken into consideration. So we'll move on to the next question.
Christina Castelucchi, I'm in the Midtown area. And thank you again for having us here in a, in a public area that we can all access. Thank you also for not asking people to say their specific address. That's always been a problem of mine personally, and so I appreciate you all changing that policy. A couple of the things, just to kind of reiterate the points that have already been made. If we are asking people to serve on this committee and put a real-time commitment and have real skills behind it, we're also not, you know, not providing them any compensation. And so I think we need to think about who is able to serve on this board? Who has the kind of flexibility in their job to show up for these regular meetings? And have all of these qualifications that we're expecting? And then also on top of that, we are, from the way that it reads, it becomes just a complaint board for the citizens, but also for the police. So they're, they're gathering the complaints, but they don't have any teeth behind it to do anything about it. And they're listening to the complaints of the citizens, as opposed to complaints of citizens, for example, coming to a city council or anything else. So it almost comes across as deflecting responsibility to this committee that doesn't have any ability to do anything about it. Because it's not currently written with any teeth or anything to be done. And then also, having the police chief serve on this committee, I personally feel like is not setting it up to be the most effective possible. I know that if I were sitting and listening to a lot of complaints and the, the chief of police were sitting next to me, that would definitely coach the way that I interpret that and, and handle the situation. So first, we could just really easily scratch the chief of police being on that committee. And then I really like Wes's suggestion of getting community involvement to appoint the, the people that are on this. But I also think we need to think about the time commitment that we're asking for from those people who are serving on this board. And, and take that into consideration as we build this. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
I know we're talking about a community advisory board, but I just wanted to ask a question. That why is it that when an individual is killed by a police officer, that the city allows that individual's family, the funding that that individual is to receive? That the city allows that officer's money to come out of what that family is supposed to retrieve? Why do that family have to pay? If you kill somebody, why would you have to pay for that individual? Why would that individual have to pay for your attorney? Why does that occur? I want to know. Why are we allowing that? That's our money. That's our taxpaying money. And if I go out here and I kill somebody, I'd be darned if I'm paying for somebody's attorney. And they ain't paying for my attorney. Anything I do wrong, anything you do wrong, we got to pay for our own attorney. And we got, and the cap that we have on our city is wrong. We need to have an unlimited cap. Because it's too much injustice that's done here in this city by these police officers. They can kill someone and get away with it and walk away with their pension. You let them leave. With their pension, their retirement and everything, that's wrong. And I want to know why the city council is allowing this? And is this their, you go as attorney? You need to get up and speak on that.
That is the solicitor for the city.
He's the solicitor?
Yeah.
Does he have anything to do with it? Could somebody need to tell me?
He wouldn't know the legal aspect of it more about.
He doesn't know the legal aspects of it.
No, I said he would know the legal aspect of it a little more. So I'm going to ask him for his opinion.
I would like for his opinion.
I think what you're referencing is that your hard tax dollars pay for the defense of an officer who sued in a civil rights case. I think that's what you're referring to. So inevitably, and this is everywhere, is that the civil rights cases aren't brought against the officer alone. They're, they're brought against the municipal government, the city of Harrisburg. The entity you pay your tax dollars to. And the suit is to ask taxpayers to fund the claim that's against them. To basically go to trial or settle a claim related to an allegation of wrongdoing by a police officer. So the city is always in it. And that the attorney for the officer is sometimes a different attorney, but very often it's simply the same attorney. Because from a court's point of view, it's a claim against the city. And, and so when the city is there in court, the attorneys are speaking for the city. Just like we would have attorneys speak for a city for a car accident or anything else. There's attorneys that are there because they're, they're there to defend taxpayer dollars from being paid out unjustly. They're also there to gather the facts about the case. They're outside counsel, they're not employees of the city. And they're there to go back and forth with the attorneys for the family and see what the evidence is and make a recommendation. But that's why you see them with the officer. The reality is, police officers, if you've got a judgment against a police officer, there'd be no money to collect at the other side if they paid, they were paying an attorney. So you would have, you would sue them, you've got a judgment. But just like most people we know, the judgment against an individual, essentially there's no money at the other side of that kind of fight. So that's the rational reason it's there. If the, if the officer and the evidence shows that they were truly outside the scope of their employment, that is, they were doing things they were not allowed to do, the city at that point will walk away from defending that officer and providing them counsel. You know, but there has to be evidence plainly that that is so. And so that, that's how that, that works here and in many cities. In some cities, the city, the union picks an attorney for the police. That doesn't happen here. We, we select attorney that we think.
Are you saying it's just one attorney?
It's a firm. It's a law firm.
Well, yeah, it's a law firm. But are you saying it's one attorney that you're picking from that law firm?
No, so we, we have an outside, what's called a third-party administrator, which is the equivalent of an insurance company, but the city is self-insured. So tax dollars pay. When that happens, that third-party administrator makes a recommendation of an attorney with experience related to the claim that's been made against the city and the officer. And then we accept or reject that recommendation.
So again, are you saying it's one attorney from that law firm that you pick, or whoever picks?
Well, not necessarily. Now, there's a lead attorney, like in most litigations, and sometimes it then goes to other attorneys in the firm, depending on what that firm has in terms of the caseload. So it could be, in a course of a case, it could be two or three attorneys. Sometimes it's just one attorney.
Why is that? Because if you have a cap that's on your city, then you're taking away from that grieving family.
I, that part, I'm not sure I understand what you're saying, ma'am.
You do understand what I'm saying.
I do not understand what you're saying.
If there's a cap on a city, there's a cap for the amount that a family can go against, right? A cap, amount of money.
So there's two different types of cases. There's a state law that caps personal injury, wrongful death, and those under state law at $500,000 for a city and most municipalities. It's less for the Commonwealth.
And if you're getting top attorneys and you're getting three or four attorneys, and they're paying, they're charging $200 or $300 an hour to work on a case, what are you leaving that family?
It doesn't come out of that. That's not how it works.
Yes, it does.
It is not.
Yes, it does.
I deal with it every day.
Yes, it does. I'm a living witness. Yes, it does. Yes, it does. Yes, it does. So do your homework.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Levett. I'm here to speak for the victims. And piggyback off of what this woman said and the girl before me. We have a lot of unsolved homicides here. And she said she was lucky to have her son's homicide resolved. I have a friend whose son, his, his murder is still out here. I have two other friends whose murders are still out here. So I have two questions for you. Who's going to protect the people who sit on the community advisory committee? And if the police are not already effective in our community and they're not present during these homicides, how are we going to get justice for these unsolved homicides?
Thank you. Who's going to protect the community advisory board? It would be the police department. The police department is there to protect everyone in the city. As they're working in cooperation. I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
How would they protect them if you're filing a complaint against them?
So, you're asking how, how, who will protect them against the police?
Who would protect the people who sit on the advisory committee? Who's going to protect them?
From who?
From the police. And they're already not present in our community. We have at least four to five homicides that have carried over every year since 2015. Why are these homicides going unsolved?
As far as why the homicides are going unsolved, that's a question that, no, if you, if you would allow me to answer it, I'll, I'll answer it to the best of my abilities. So when talking to the police department, depending on who you talk to, you're going to get different answers. Talking to the police department, they said the reason why there are unsolved homicides is because they can't get cooperation. When they go places and they're like, oh, I don't trust the police, I'm not talking to you, I won't tell you what happened. Then it makes it harder to investigate. Other than that, I don't know the reason for unsolved homicides. Because we don't find the killer.
So we have police that are ineffective. And then you're asking the community to do what the police shouldn't be doing. So it's just like, something needs to be rear-bringed within, like how you are, how they're policing our community. And in that, we voted for you guys. So we hold you accountable for everything you're saying. The victims, I don't even see them in this community. Their, their family, they're not in the community. So maybe you could advocate more for their, their police to be heard, instead of people that are not victims who are staying in the community.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yes, my name is Elise Roberts. And I just want to let y'all know about, y'all talk about policing the police. I've been doing this. Chief Carter, number's on my phone. When I see the police out here doing something, I call Chief Carter. Chief Carter has been on the phone with these ignorant behind cops that's out here. And pulled a young man over for some tent. I said, you pulling a young man over for some tent? And here COVID-19 is going on. So what are you going to do with him? Because he got some tent on his window right now, when we're fighting for our life. Know what they said? And Chief Carter was on the phone. I say, well, I've got Chief Carter on the phone right here. He said, F Chief Carter, one of his officers. So when you talk about policing the police, I've been policing the police. Anytime I see anything, I call Chief Carter and let him know, your officer's out here acting like thugs, right now. When I see him in the neighborhood, I've been doing it. But then you become a target with the police.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's George. I've got a lot to say, but y'all sitting up there ain't going to solve no problem. This is not going to solve no problem. The only way to solve the problem is open up in the community. Do something. Vote. Flyers on doors. Wake up. Smell the coffee. But y'all, y'all sitting up there, it's not going to solve anything. So I do got a question. How to open up the community is can we do something about it? Instead of bragging and bragging and bragging and bragging? Because the more you brag, the more we're in the same boat. So can we do something about this? Can we open up the community? Such as putting flyers on people's doors? Do something nice for those what happened to George Floyd. Such as laying flowers down. Do something. Respect for the people that is deceased. So I have a question. Is there any way possible to, for us to open up this community? What can we do?
I, I think I can answer that question. There's always more ways to create more community involvement, whether it's with council or with community organizations. Start by going to the events that are happening. I was, I've been to several events over the summer here at Reservoir Park. And the attendance is nowhere near what it could be and what it should be for the amount of people we have in the city. So it's spreading the word, it's showing up when events do happen. It's participating, it's being an active member. So yes, we can open it up. So I think that's the answer to the question. Yes, I mean, it's, it's always ways to increase community activities, community spirit. You yourself can hold an event and invite everybody to it. That's one way of opening it up.
Yep, because what I think that we need to do something in the community, like for something like this, for our community. Our community. You know, we need to be open-minded. We need to have, I already talked to Kevin Matson about it, but he's going to talk to the city, to the city council or about it. Okay? Why in New York, they have reggae festival every once a year? Why can't we do that? Why can't we put flyers on people's doors to be opened up in the community? We need to do something like that. Because if we do something like that, then everyone's going to get involved.
Thank you. I know as a city, we do host many events. We've got the Capone coming up. We've just had drive-in, we've had the, the movies going on over the summer. We try to ensure we host different events, lots of community organizations host events. So I guess it's just about spreading the word and getting it out there. So thank you, I appreciate your comment.
All right, thank you.
How you doing? My name is Louis Riley. I just wanted to take this moment to just say that, for me personally, in, in, in the neighborhoods, the initial contact from the police is where it goes wrong. Like the initial contact. Like I'm a grown man. So when you approach me, approach me like I pay bills and everything else like you. You, you understand what I'm saying? Like, don't talk down to me, because it's going to be a problem. Man-to-man, I'm not going to let you talk to me like I'm a boy. So that's, that's the problem from the gate. When you come into the neighborhood and you talk to me like I'm less than you. I, I have a problem with that. So at that point, yeah, I, I get attitude. I, I get attitude, because you know, I got the same bills, you got two kids, you got, like, what makes me different? Address me as Mr. Riley. And I'll address you as officer. Diversity. You understand what I'm saying? That's what it's about. And for me, that the initial contact is, is where it goes wrong all the time. When police arrive on the scene, they don't arrive on the scene in a way that people are going to accept them. They, they, they come in like brash and, and treating individuals, like, like I said, as if they're less than people. And that's what people don't particularly care for. And I'm just saying, that's going to always be an issue in the community if you address a grown man or a grown woman like they're not a grown man or a grown woman. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Hello, my friends.
Hello.
I ain't calling you Rashid or fellow constituent. Heard a lot of stuff here. I took a lot of notes and I can't agree with everyone. We need you, we elected you because of your leadership capabilities. And you haven't done anything wrong, as far as I know, as long as you've been in office. But since the 1980s and 70s and we've had gang wars and shootouts and all kinds of things all the time. And most of the residents don't even want to tell who did it. And, um, every time I go to city council meetings, the seats are always empty. Very seldom do people come down unless some major incident happens that directly affects them. But if people would come down consistently to know what's going on, they would be able to have more, uh, intellectual knowledge of what's going on with the system and how it operates. And most of the people, um, are looking at Harrisburg City Council in the wrong light, as if it's powerless over- Well, well, Harrisburg City Council is powerless over the criminal actions of others. But we have to, in my opinion, as a community, um, make our communities strong enough to, uh, implant in, within the criminals', uh, mind that your neighborhood is not the one to come and do their crime. Because they will suffer consequences from their actions. But, um, that's not really what's happening. My, my, um, grandfather, late grandfather, was Joel Als. He retired from the, uh, Baltimore City Police Department. And then he moved here and retired again from the Harrisburg Incinerator. And he came up during the days when they had the, uh, uh, police baton and the Black Jacks. And the beatdown was accepted by the society. But as the years went on, here in Harrisburg, and I'm born and raised here, I remember back in the 1980s when we had such a big crime wave, that the guardian agents from New York came down here and they patrolled our streets, uh, because our people wouldn't do it. And we ran them out. And, um, then after that, in the 70s, it was the Nation of Islam. They were patrolling the streets. And everybody didn't like them. So they stopped doing it. Uh, we've had, uh, our homicide rates going up consistently over the years. And with technology, it, it creates, um, a lot of difficulty. Uh, but people don't wanna get involved. Um, it's obvious. I, I am, uh, uh, in agreement that our law enforcement officials sometimes do run roughshod over, uh, of, of their duties. Meaning like unnec- unnecessarily dragging people out of the cars and, you know, doing car searches. So, um, to get to the point, I think that anyone that's on the advisory board should be an individual that has already been demonstrating their interest in our community by having been proactive in community events and city hall, Harrisburg City Council, knowing what resolutions that, um, are there and, and that they can comment on them and support, uh, or not support the resolutions made by our distinguished staff up here. So just to, uh, whatever the procedure's gonna be, uh, that's my opinion on that. And I don't think, uh, anyone here that hasn't been getting involved with community, uh, activ- I haven't heard anybody say they wanted the position. You know what I mean, by the way? I mean, I heard- I mean, but, uh, um, it's really something to look at. I know that I'm proud of the job that you've all been doing. And, um, I'm, due to the COVID, I guess we haven't had any meetings at city hall. But, um, this is the first one I've made since, uh, January 14th and, um, I'm glad to be back and I'm glad to see all of you up there. And you have my full support and the voters that back me.
Alright, thank you.
Hi, Carrie Fowler again. I live in Midtown. Uh, Mr. Grover, this is a follow-up to the question that Jane Buckwack asked, and you got interrupted and did not get to finish. So the question was, can you give us an explanation of the step-by-step process an officer goes through when being reviewed for excessive use of force? And more importantly, when does the officer actually get disciplined? Does that happen first, and then there's a criminal investigation? Or is it the opposite, how it happens? And does the officer have access to the evidence before or after? Or does the officer get the evidence that it is being charged against him?
So that's not a follow-up question, that's a follow-up list. So, uh, so it's a mismatch. The way, you're framing it in a way differently than I would frame it in my head.
So then let's take it from the very first question.
Why don't you let me walk it through as best I can? Because I'm, I don't do police investigations. I'm, I'm a lawyer who deals with paperwork afterwards. The district attorney portion, if there's a criminal investigation, happens immediately. Normally, the officer is placed on administrative leave during that investigation. They're compelled to come in and give a statement, uh, both to the district attorney's office and to the internal affairs.
What determines if it goes to the district attorney's office?
Um, usually if it's a shooting case, and then there's an accusation that, uh, it was, it was not justified. So first they decide whether it's justified. First thing, that's it.
What about excessive force? Does that go to DA?
So, okay, a shooting can be excessive, or so that's the highest level of it, and it goes down. Some excessive force, if it's allegation that the police determine that they, uh, there was a, a belief that a crime was committed in the process. And they try to make that determination quickly, they would take it over there, over to there. There's, there's a lot of things that get investigated by a third party, because that's the way it has to be. You don't investigate yourselves. Uh, excessive force allegations, let's say that, um, my son walked into the police bureau and made a complaint. And said, "I was out last night and, and I think this cop roughed me up, you know, downtown when I was, I was walking downtown." It, they would start with, what do you know who you were, contacted with? They would get information and start that. So they would start gathering information at that point internally. And they would see if the officer was on shift that's being complained about. They, they do sort of the practical pieces to it first. It depends on the level of it. But if it's excessive force that if someone is injured, every injury, uh, requires a use of force report to be filed. Every single one of them. Every time, you know, there is, uh, the fact that they take someone's arm and take them to a car, that's not forced to get to report. If they got into a tussle with somebody, you know, there's a report filed on every one of these use of force incidents. And that then goes up through the chain of command, um, immediately from the supervisor in the field, then up to the, uh, lieutenants and captains, and then up to the commissioner. So that, and so judgments get made along the way, depending on what's in that report. If they think the report is incomplete, they push and wanna know and bring them into, you know, this, this report doesn't make any sense to me.
When you're saying "they," who are you referring to?
The, they're, they're, they're command staff, ab- above them. Because the first-
So the chief of police?
Or, or a captain or a lieutenant. They're basically, basically trying to take an officer and say, you know, officers have a chain of command. They provide information about what happened last night, this morning. Someone has to review that every time. It just has to be. And, and then that goes up. And there'll be things that raise flags up that hole, either for incompleteness or, or plain-out excessiveness. Um, you know, the, uh, they, as far as I know, speak to everyone where someone is injured and try to figure out exactly what happened. They try to see if there's, uh, video footage of it, if there's a recording of it, if there's witnesses. They try and do all of those things. Um, you know, but
If, if this, if the complaint is serious enough and the person is presenting with marks, bruises, is that enough to remove the officer right then and there to start an investigation? Or does the officer still get to report to work and continue with his duties?
They, they would not be removed right in there unless there was evidence that there was, you know, a, a lot of things that happen are two-way, not one-way. A lot of things. And people can say otherwise, but a lot of things, if you look on the tapes, they're two-way. So, you know, I've had, we get sued by people that say, "You should've punched me. You should've punched me twice. You shouldn't have punched me three times." That's an excessive force case, where the force up to the two punch, because I was at, I was, I was drunk and out of control, but you shouldn't have hit me the third time. That's a fair question for someone. You know, where does the police stop when they're getting the situation under control? So, uh, but they won't know that from the complaint coming in. They've gotta look at it first. And then if there's discipline, it comes after the fact, because it's due process. That's what the courts have said. It's a due process. So you don't discipline someone on the front end before the investigation is done. If the investigation is a finding that there's a violation of the use of force policy, then it's a discipline imposed by the commissioner, uh, on the officer. And there's a wide range into it, from suspension to days without pay, up to termination. It depends on the severity. Depends on the history of the officer as well.
Hi again. Um, I have a question about how we can get the community more involved. And, um, I have two other questions after that. And I'm here to speak on behalf of the victims in the community who face violence. Um, how many votes did it take for y'all to get elected? It took canvassing and door knocking, right? So if it took that for you to get elected or our votes, why won't you take those steps to get the community involved? My other question is, where are the police at in this conversation? Because you guys keep speaking from a third person. Maybe, uh, when we have another town hall, you can bring the police so they can a- answer our questions?
Um, it's, I'll just, I'll answer that one right now, just 'cause we're on that one. Um, the police were invited to our legislative session when, the last time we spoke about this bill and, uh, and legislation. The police were invited. They did give comments. I wanted this to be an open forum where people did not feel like they were gonna be intimidated or, you, I, I didn't want any negative bias.
But we won't feel intimidated. We wanna talk, I wanna talk to them.
So at our, at our next, uh, next session that we, um, I know some of the-
And not just Commissioner Carter. We need the actual police officers here, so that they can address our concerns as well.
Alright, well, there are a large amount of officers.
I mean, whoever, whoever will come out.
So, a- a- again, my name is Wes Majors, member Harrisburg City Council. I'll take this down. Um, so I think you may run into some union issues in terms of each individual police officer wanting to show up and speak on behalf of other police officers. We can ask them to come, but they're always going to defer to their senior staff in order to be the ones to engage with the public. So we may get, uh, Commissioner Carter, we may get someone from his command staff, so at the captain level or a, a deputy chief level, we may even get the community policing officer. But to get individual officers here to speak on those issues, you're going to get the senior staff that, that come to speak. I know Commissioner Carter came to one town hall, and we can address those issues with him, but we're here to help be the conduit. If you have those questions, you can provide them to us. And we can also, you can also provide them directly to the commissioner, so we can help get those answers.
You're speaking from a third person, so we don't, we don't know if you're, if what you say, that they said, is what they said. So, I'm not saying that you're a liar or anything like that, but what I am saying is, once you get to the union and they say, "Oh, we can't," or, uh, "Maybe not," we, we address that obstacle when we get there. But it's, it's, it'd probably be better if you invite the officers, Fran Cardo, whoever, to the conversation. We also need probation officers at this conver- uh, conversation, because they terrorize our community as well.
So just to a couple of those, one, probation officers are through the county, not through the city?
I mean, what, whatever you can do to get them at this conversation, except for use excuses.
Right, so the, the purpose of this is to get actual discussion on this bill, not the entire police reform.
But we're discussing the police, so we need them to be a part of the conversation.
I understand that. The thing is, what we're trying to avoid is things getting caught up in the system. We're not trying to bring in-
But we're caught up in the system.
So-
The purpose of this bill is to get it done.
Okay, so, so, and, and I apologize if I, if I cut you off. So I can, I'm, I'm gonna take a, a, a quick step back. In 2016, when we were looking at this specific issue, we had the DA at the time, we had folks from Dolphin County Courts and the city. We all couldn't agree, because we were looking at something that was going to try to encompass all of that. Right now, if we're looking to address issues with the Harrisburg Police Department, we are going to try to attack those issues. Issues with Dolphin County Prison are at the, at, we have to address the issues at the level that we can address them. So for us on council and in the city of Harrisburg, we can address issues with our police department. And that's why I think we're trying to get that input on those. But in terms of each incident that's happening at the prison, we don't have any jurisdiction over-
Not the prison.
And we have, and probation officers are at the county level. So they are not members of the Harrisburg Police Department. They are, are a part of the Dolphin County Correction System. That is not a, a direct, we do not have the direct input on how they operate. We can provide our comments. We can work with you to get their comments to them. But they, but in terms of probation, that is nothing that, uh, Harrisburg, Harrisburg Police has, or us have any jurisdiction.
Okay, I'm more so concerned with unsolved homicides more than anything. Not, not with the people who's in Dolphin County Prison. I am concerned with people who are wrongfully convicted or brutal, uh, brutalized by the police. But what about the unsolved homicides? And the other thing I wanna know is, um, have any of you guys ever faced any of our issues? Do you actually live in the city of Harrisburg, around the area, I know you do, West room? Around the area of, of, of 13th and Kitten Tinni, in South Side, in Uptown Harrisburg?
I live in Harrisburg on Ross Street.
You took the initiative to walk through those communities and gain our votes, but when we need you, you're not even here.
But I am.
You, you're asking, you, a person asks you, "How can we get the community involved?" You said through community advocates. But, but you got the community on your side to gain our votes, which tells me you walked through those communities.
And I will let you know, I walk through those communities every single day.
Okay, so, just how they signed your petition is just how you can get them out here.
Right, and I'm, I'm always out there. I'm always spreading the word. I can't make my show one of that.
The victims aren't here. As I look around, they're not here.
And that's my choice.
So it would be for me, to you, to just try harder for those mothers who have lost their children. Because they're, they're suffering and, and they're grieving and they're not here.
Okay. Thank you.
Hello, um, my name is Vishal. I live in Midtown. Um, I just to real quick go off on what was just said. I think part of a lot of that frustration comes from, we hear time and time again from city council or from the mayor that, uh, citizens here in the city don't come, don't give input, that you guys don't know what we want. But we also see that you guys make it really, really hard for us to tell you what we want. Um, so the, the fact of the matter is, the amount of effort, like, like was said, the amount of effort you put into getting your reelection campaigns out there isn't the amount of effort you guys put into marketing stuff like this. And it isn't the kind of effort you guys put into, uh, setting up the Zoom calls and stuff like that. So, uh, we don't really believe you wanna hear us, because you don't really make it look like you do. But, um, that being said, uh, my main concern here right now is how this bill, and I, I mentioned this at the first forum too. How this bill reads right now seems like a, a PR vehicle for the police, a PR vehicle for the mayor. Um, I wanna say, um, the membership qualifications, there's only two educational requirements, C and D. Both of them are that members are to take educative sessions provided by the Harrisburg Police Department. Um, the, there's, there's no other education provided about how communities might be, uh, inflicted with trauma by police officers, how, how to respond to that. The only education provided is education on behalf of the Harrisburg Police Department. Commissioner Carter sits in these meetings and gets to tell people as they read the complaints what his thoughts are in real time, but victims aren't invited. So the, the, the legislation as it reads right now does not read like a sincere effort to hold police accountable. It holds like a, it, it reads like a PR attempt. Um, that being said, I also hear a lot of words here about what, uh, we have the power to do, what we have the power to don't. I'm really concerned if the city doesn't have the power to hold the police accountable. That means the police are more powerful than us, and that's unacceptable. If we don't have subpoena power, we should ask for the documents and have them tell us no, and we can go and protest outside the police, uh, department. Okay? If, if we can't, if we can't through the, 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 uh, board fire police officers, we can recommend them to be fired. We can recommend them to be disciplined, and when they say no, we can go outside the police department and protest about it. So I, I, I don't wanna hear that we don't have the power. I don't wanna hear that the police are more powerful than the city or that the police are more powerful than the citizens right now. Um, there has to be some way we can arrange this board to give us the powers we're looking for and to not make it a PR vehicle for police officers. Thank you. Yep.
Oh, it's me again. Uh, Jane Buckwack, Allison Hill. So listen, one of the things I'd like to see, maybe either in this bill as an amendment or for city council to take up separately, is true community policing. Meaning police officers in their precincts. Now, I've heard all the excuses, "We can't do that." But I maintain if a neighborhood has recognizable police, police that are always there, I, I didn't even know we had seven policing precincts, but okay. So I think that'll help. And, and community policing has to be more than feel-good, uh- And, and community policing has to be more than feel-good, um, things. It has to be police in the community knowing the, the neighborhood, the neighborhood knowing them, stopping for, have a glass of iced tea on a porch. Right now, we don't have that. We have to beg to get them to drive through our neighborhoods. So I know what the, what the, what I consider an excuse is, the excuse is, well, we don't have enough officers. Oh, well, figure it out. Because right now, I don't need photo op cops. We need police embedded in our communities and doing that truck. Maybe they wouldn't be so, so quick to shoot. You know, maybe they would learn. They would know that this person might, might need, uh, a counselor, might need mental health. So I, I don't know how you guys are going to do it, but I'm going to trust that you are. And let's really get community policing for what it's supposed to be. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Greetings, my name is Mark Smith, I reside in, uh, Steelton, Pennsylvania. And I, uh, I also do a lot of work here in Harrisburg as well. I wanted to, to mention that I heard a lot of very good comments here. I have also lived in other jurisdictions, uh, that, uh, the, their city officials are not nearly as receptive or as, um, or provide initiative as you all do, so I applaud the efforts here. Uh, my comment for, uh, and I also wanted to, uh, applaud Commissioner Carter, by the way. He has some great skills. He can't do it all himself, but he has some very good skill. Uh, as far as the Citizens Law Enforcement Advisory Committee and the community involvement, there is a building right up here, the National Civil War Museum, that can stay open until nine. And if there's an MOU, a memorandum of understanding that Harrisburg can have, uh, with the National Civil War Museum, to keep it open for the youth and to keep it open for maybe an auxiliary office for the Citizens Law Enforcement Committee, uh, maybe an idea, it's a, it's a resource to be used, it's not open right now. So if it is open after their hours specifically for this, I think that would be a good resource. Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I do got a question. I believe in the funding of the police, I totally believe it a hundred percent. But the question is, is there, okay, an organization way of defunding the police? Can we defund the guns from the police before we defund the police? Can we do that?
I think you're asking, can we, um, go through the police budget and, and remove the, the funding for new weapons?
Correct.
That's something we would have to look into.
Okay, uh, can we please do that and find out if we can do that?
We can, we can do some studies on, uh, the viability of doing that, yes.
Alright, thank you.
I quickly just want to say one thing, I want to, I don't want to be looked at or thought as, as a angry black man coming here doing this, no. I want to send an apology to everybody up there if you felt that I was trying to degrade you because you took the time out to educate yourself, got your degrees and that. No, I wasn't trying to do that. So if you thought that I was trying to do that, I do apologize. Because what you did and what you took the time out to gain, uh, your degrees and everything, nobody can take that up from you. I was just coming from the heart and then, you know, what, what I live and breathe because I had an incident myself where they come to me, you Tony Mitchell, uh, hands on the guns and, and then what they served me with later on, it, it got thrown out, it wasn't nothing. It's just the way that the police officers approach us. It's the way they approach us. It's the way that you approach people. They say the, the, the first, uh, glance or the first, is the lasting impression? Well, that's what happens to us. The way they approach us is so rude and so ignorant and stuff. You, it, and, and that's the last impression that we have of people in the community. We don't want to have that. Martin Luther King said that the most dangerous thing that any human being can have is consent ignorant. And we in the community are not ignorant. We might not have all the degrees, we might not have all the education, but we want to live in peace and harmony and give us the same rights as anybody else. That's what we want. You have the power, community. The power is in your hands. You have the power. If you don't like what, weapons that you, get rid of it, vote them out. You have the strength and use it. This is why I'm talking about all these speeches. Where are you at? You have authority, you have authority in your voice. Bring it here, make it known. Amen. Thank you. God bless everybody.
Thank you.
Um, good evening, I just had a specific question. Um, in reviewing the bill, and I know that you, um, last time you were here had a very important stance on mental health. It doesn't seem like mental health, either in training or mandates or recommendation, is even sprinkled anywhere on any of the paperwork that we are looking to amend or submit. Can you give a clear position on what aspects of mental health training specifically you think should go into? Um, whether that be the consequence level or not, what do you think is necessary as far as mental health training or redirection when it comes to building a bill like this that will be submitted for review? As the community safety chair.
Um, thank you. First, uh, I don't, that's something I think is outside of this bill, that's me personally. I believe that it's something that needs to be built into the actual structure of our police department. Um, I've been talking with council president along with, uh, some of the administration about getting, uh, specialists in different areas of not just mental health, but also domestic violence, childhood trauma, child abuse. I think we need actual liaisons with our police officers because some of the pressure that's put on our police officers, they're going from a homicide to a domestic violence call. If you're hyped up from a homicide, you just had to see a kid laying in the street dead, now you're going to a domestic violence call, you're on two different levels. You know, like dealing with that in the, in the same hour span or something, it's not something that should be done. So with the amount of officers we have, we need to have people who specialize in those fields, who have education in dealing with, uh, trauma-related care, um, who, who have de-escalation training when it comes to domestic violence. I believe that that's a reform we need to put in the system and not just in this bill. So this bill is more about the advisory board, but I feel like we need more in the system itself because right now our, our system's not set up to deal with those things at all. Everything is looked at it from a criminal perspective and everything shouldn't be approached that way.
Right, and thank you for that because that's actually one of the few times where they're clear on what specifically you're looking for for mental health. When I'm looking at the advisory board, the individuals that you want to be on the board, um, specifically to mental health, a training, a specialization, a, a inkling, a yearning, what specific skillset do you believe, if you believe at all, should come with an advisory board with community members and police members when it comes to advising the city? Do you believe that community members should have a background in mental health? Do you believe that a person who is elected, who suffers from PTSD is not a viable member? So when we talk about mental health, when we talk about trauma and PTSD, which a majority of whoever we would be electing in the city would suffer from, is there anything that would exile or make someone not a viable candidate? If somebody had a 302 as opposed to a 201, a voluntary versus involuntary psychiatric, um, does, do any of those things matter? Because I think that when we're electing community, one thing you have to be clear on is you're electing individuals who are, uh, are part of the community, but you can also be electing individuals that are suffering from some pretty significant sicknesses. So a person who does that and comes into a committee might have a skewed level, might have work that they need to do or maybe are unclear on what it is that needs to happen. Conversely, I'll say there are people who specialize or are knowledgeable in mental health that might be necessary in these advisory boards as a member. Um, so I see that it's very clear that you guys want police presence in the advisory board and that's okay. But the fact that there is not a clear need for a specialized mental health professional or any type of indication of how mental health plays a role in qualifications, is scary to me when the hype and the trend has consistently been, we need mental health, we need mental health. But when we're talking about excessive force, which deals around a person's psyche and bias, there's no indication of how you all feel or how we feel as to what aspects of mental health we are either looking for in the candidates or what personal mental health setbacks might be a hindrance to the committee. Does that make sense?
It does make sense. Um, obviously, uh, that seems like it's something that might be lacking in the bill and that we need to work into it. So that's definitely something that should be amended into it. Um, I'd like to work with you to make it more specific because that isn't my background. Um, I, I worked, um, during my college years, I worked in, in some group homes and managed group homes. So I know a little bit about mental health and different diagnosis, but that's not, not my specific background, it's not the line of work I'm in. So I'd love to work with you or anyone else who would like to make it more specific because you would know the type of things that you'd be looking for. Um, I do believe it, it calls for, um, like two members to, to have, uh, social work backgrounds or something like that. But so we need to be more specific about mental health because it does play a, a big impact on how things are approached and how policies are written or how trainings are being conducted, so it's very important.
Social work is like, it's not the same, you know what I mean, as mental health and it's very broad. And social workers are not mental health professionals and neither are cops. So I think that we have to be specific about mental health if we are trying to push mental health agenda in the larger structure. How we advise people has, has to do with the psyche and the education. If we're looking at excessive force and people are justifying it or people are not justifying it, that is based off of somebody's lived experience and trauma. So we will have very problematic behavior in the advisory board itself if we don't have clear indications on what can qualify someone as inept and what can qualify someone as a viable candidate and also what steps in mental health we're looking for when we're talking about the advisory board because social work was very broad. So I was like, uh, that doesn't scream mental health to me, that screams like a TSS or something else, right? So it's not specific to mental health. And then I just had a, a final comment. I think with the bill passing in, in the midst of discussion, civic education is lacking in Harrisburg City and that's just as plain as that. People don't know who to argue, people don't know who to blame, people don't know what's going on. And I won't go as far as saying like you guys aren't going door to door, right? Because I see the people that are working and then I see the people that are not working. And karma's going to get people either way, right? God will speak. But I think what's important is that people don't even know, so when you write something like, hey, come out and discuss Bill Eight, the extra step that I think would be helpful for community leaders is if you do the due diligence to provide the education, right? So if you just make it a bill and it's very vague, people aren't going to know what to come out for. That's not always your fault because I feel like people need to read like they read flyers to go to the club. But I also think that the city, at the city council level, you guys have such a responsibility to educate on what's going on because people really don't know that you all have the space to make the decisions about a lot of the things that's happening. So I would just ask again to consider how civic education from a community safety standpoint, um, can be increased to community members so that we don't have to do the backwork of elected and paid officials to educate people on Facebook, to bring people to the events that you guys are supposed to market under that with the education provided. Like it's not my job or Kay's job or YPOC's job, we don't get paid for this. We're very tired and we're very exhausted, but because we're civil servants, we like to aid elected officials. But it would just be nice if elected officials did their due diligence in providing the education so that we wouldn't have to then go back, educate ourselves on things we don't know and then re-educate a community that you guys swore to educate and guide and monitor.
Thank you. I would just like to note that we have about 10 minutes or so left. If we run over, that's fine. But if anyone else would like to make comments, I'd ask that you start to approach the microphone. That way we can just kind of gauge about how many more, uh, comments we have.
How you doing again? My name's, uh, Jamal Walker, uh, Aboriginal, uh,
Mr. Walker, would you mind speaking into the microphone a little more?
Yes, uh, um, sat back and listened to everybody again today. And, uh, as I spoke earlier, I was talking about the people organizing on these streets are getting to protect themselves. We, we heard plenty complaints about what's going on out here. Now, as, as, uh, the lady, uh, ahead of me just got done speaking, people done held, voted y'all in here to hold y'all cannibal for representing this city. Will y'all be willing to fund any organization out here to help protect these streets, to help give the police maybe a helping hand with helping out the police, uh, the people? To help the police govern themselves, to help the police, the people set up some type of fan, some type of program, anything coming from city council?
Um, I'll, I'll answer that. From my perspective, I can't speak for all council members. I would say I would be for funding, uh, community organizations that are meant to assist with community policing or funding community organizations that are meant to, uh, increase public safety. I think the best way of, of going about that might be applying for CDBG money, uh, which will be available to the community organizations, they just have to be set up.
Well, thank you.
Alright, so if we don't have any more comments, we'll start to bring it to a wrap. So if anyone would like to make any last comments or have any last questions, please feel free to approach the microphone. Uh, we've got some council members here that would like to make comments.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to thank you all for your attendance here this evening. Um, know that I've been quiet, but I'm listening as I've been listening over the past two weeks now and rigorously taking notes of everything that you're saying so we can be clear, we can be conscious and very deliberate in our amendments that we will offer to Bill Eight. I also wanted to note, please don't forget about Resolution 51 of 2020 that's reviewing these cities' use of force policy. Um, I wanted to thank Mr. Mike Alexander for compiling some research on citizens' review boards, which he has shared with the members of city council, um, Amanda Arbor. I am like Shirley Chisholm, the first black woman in Congress, the first black woman to run for president, unbought and unbossed. So that answers your question. Finally, I'd like to thank Councilwoman Asha Green, Public Safety Chair, for hosting all the virtual and physical, um, town hall meetings. If everyone could please give her a hand, this has been a task and she's been up for the challenge. So I just wanted to thank you again, Asha. But again, we see you, we hear you, please continue to, to stay engaged. City council is off of our summer break next week, next Tuesday, August 25th. We will be back in session, I'm not sure if we are meeting physically or if we're virtual, but either way, um, please stay engaged, um, and continue to comment on these very, very important matters that are before us. But the time is now, we must take action, but again, we want to do this right. So thank you again for your attendance this evening.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Dave Mattson, Harrisburg City Council, Chair of Community and Economic Development. Uh, I don't want to belabor the point, I just want to thank my colleagues coming out tonight, yourselves coming out and soliciting your input. I wanted to do a quick plug for the census. The census is due in September, it was cut short by a month. Usually we collect census data until October. What's at stake is millions of dollars that can go into the community. In 2010, uh, we were undercounted by almost 50%. We are very much at risk of being uncounted again. Frankly, we will be uncounted again because of the actions of the federal government. So I need all of you to fill out your census document. If you haven't yet, uh, please, if someone knocks on your door, safely fill out the census document. You can go on census.gov if you do not have internet access, there is a number you can call, I don't have it in front of you. But, uh, if you are interested in filling out the census and do lack internet capabilities, please let me know, I'll be standing right here to get you that information. But please spread the word to fill out the census, it's very important, it will bring vital dollars and can affect our representation in Congress as well. Thank you.
Again, good evening, everyone. Uh, and, uh, to Mr. Mitchell, you don't have to apologize, you're allowed to express your opinion to us. We hear you, as you can tell, I'm another black man here in America, it's, it's, it's tough sometimes. So express us, express to any us how you feel, we are taking all of that under advisement. To, uh, to Miss, to Amanda, again, as, uh, other council members said, not taking any money from the police, don't plan on to, don't, and, and never will. Um, I will just say, just as a, a point of, uh, note, I have a brother who is a member of law enforcement, he's a state police officer. I, I even asked him, no, I don't need anything from you. Um, so, uh, and just to how we're going to proceed, uh, council, uh, chair, uh, excuse me, Public Safety Chair Green, uh, we could talk through this process. So when we do come back, uh, we'll likely have a readout of these, uh, over this, this summer, how we, how these meetings have gone by our, uh, Public Safety Chair. Uh, our next work session will be the first, uh, Tuesday in September, which which we can start the process of making amendments to this. Uh, yeah, it's my personal, uh, belief that we should get it done right, not done quick. Uh, this is why we've been holding these meetings, but even as we do go through the amendment process and make changes, those will be posted publicly. Uh, we can also, as a few members of the community have pointed out, uh, Vishal and others, that we can do a better job of trying to get your input and your feedback. We will, uh, you know, you, I, I have no problem knocking on doors, asking people to come out to events. We post things. We, we, you know, we, we show up at events with flyers and email addresses and anything that people want. If you want to get the input, I, I, I think most of us pride ourselves in trying to be as accessible as we can. We give you our phone numbers. If you have questions, provide it to us. And to other members of the community who have had complaints, uh, and direct them directly to, uh, Commissioner Carter. I appreciate that, but one thing that, uh, is, is frustrating is we make data-driven decisions sometimes. So if you go to the commissioner directly, we have no idea of the incident that occurred and it doesn't get documented in the information that the police provide to city council in terms of how they, uh, process citizens' complaints. So I'm, I, I'm not speaking out of turn here. It's a document that was provided to us. Uh, for twenty-nineteen, the number of citizens' complaints that came in through the, the, the proper channel so that they could be documented were, I think, three. And I, and I know for a fact that there are people who have interactions that may come to me. I say, fill out the form or go through that process. If you come directly to us, we hear it anecdotally, but in terms of making data-driven decisions that help drive funding and help, help drive how other policymakers can make decisions. If you're going directly to the commissioner, it can get addressed, but he's not then documenting that in a form that shows how his officers are acting. We get direct complaints from individuals, especially right now during COVID. And I think people here have sent me pictures of police officers not wearing masks and interacting with the public. We, we, uh, I, I can address that directly to the commissioner once I receive it. But if they don't have, if we don't have these, these complaints coming in, officers aren't necessarily compelled to make some of those changes. So I appreciate people going directly to individuals, but also go through that process so that those decisions, so that it can be documented. And when, if other jurisdictions are going to come in and make decisions about how we are police, so in, uh, other administration, well, uh, under the previous president, there were a lot of DOJ decisions across the country, but they were coming in to look at police, uh, interactions with their communities. They can make those off of the cit, data and some anecdotes. But if we don't have the data to back up everything that people are saying, they're going to look at those documents and say, the issue, the, the concerns based on what we're seeing and what we're hearing are different and they're going to have to try to figure out how to navigate those too. So go direct, but also follow up with the paperwork, please. Uh, I, I think it's going to take us a little while as we're going to continue to go through this process to get information and make those decisions. But through every part of that process, uh, I'm not going to speak for other people, but we will, we will, well, I, I can't say. We will, we, I will work to give you as much information as I can and to be as accessible as possible. Thank you all for coming out and taking the time out of your evening to, to, uh, present your concerns to us, members of council. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, just kind of to reiterate, thank you, everybody, for coming out. We really appreciate, um, you showing up, show, uh, you know, telling us your stories, giving us your concerns, letting your voices be known. Uh, we'll continue to work through this process. So, uh, as Councilman Vower said, next Tuesday, we return back into session. This will not be on the agenda to be voted for, but our next work session is the first, uh, first Tuesday in September and we will start to look at the amendment process. So please be a part of that as well. Um, not sure if it's going to be virtual or in person, but either way, I will push to make sure that it's at least broadcast virtually so that everyone can be a part of it. I think that now that we have access to that, that technology, it's important that we keep it up because we want to get people as educated and as involved as possible. So if putting it on YouTube and Facebook is the easiest way to get it out there, then let's do it that way as well. So even if it's in person, you'll be able to participate in some manner, virtually. Um, we'll, we'll try to make sure everything is, is accessible as possible and we will work these amendments to make sure that the concerns of the citizens are in there. So once again, thank you for coming out. We look forward to continuing to hear from you. Um, please feel free to reach out to me via, uh, Facebook. You can have my phone number. Please don't call me after eleven PM or before six AM. So my phone number is seven one seven, six two three, eight four one two. Um, like, like, uh, Councilman Major said, we try to be accessible. We're always out here. Uh, we're always in the community. Feel free to stop us in the grocery store, in the supermarket, at the Broad Street Market. When you see me walking out the south through the projects, don't, you know, feel free to, to stop me and say, hey, I've been wanting to talk to you. On my way here, somebody stopped me at Dollar General and said, hey, what have you been up to? I saw you drive by, I just wanted to talk to you. So feel free to reach out to us at any point. Uh, we're always accessible. We're members of the community. Uh, most of us have grown up here. We're ingrained in here and we always want to be a part of the solution. So, thank you again.